I call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Finance Administration and Communications Committee of the whole of the Redmond City Council on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, commencing at 4:30 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Salahudin, and myself, Council President Kritzer. I'll be chairing this meeting. Our usual Chair, Councilmember Fields, is online, has asked me to help with chairing here. So there are five items on our agenda. The first item on the agenda is around revising the Redmond Municipal Code 2.36, City Attorney. And we have our COO Melissa files here to present. Go ahead.
Thank you, and good afternoon. As you are aware, council approved an in-house city attorney during the last biennial budget. The city attorney is governed under Chapter 2.36 of the Redmond Municipal Code. This code is back from 1963 and has not been revised since that time. A couple of things that the code does, it assumed a contract city attorney, ad infinitum, I'm assuming, at that point. So the code, in order to bring the city attorney in-house, needs to be revised. And essentially, there's two revisions. One is to eliminate 2.63.030 and 040, which talks about how a contract city attorney will be compensated. Even our city attorney right now is not compensated like the code says it is. So we'll eliminate those two statutes as an in-house city attorney will be compensated under our personnel manual, like all other employees. The second change is to provide gender neutrality in the code. So since we're changing the code, let's change it for all the changes we need to make. Even with the changes in the code, it still allows us to contract for city attorney services. So there is 050, which talks about contracting for expertise that we might not have. So we still would be able to, if we don't have expertise in-house when it comes to a legal issue, we still will be able to contract with a city attorney who has that expertise. So along with code changes, we are looking at job descriptions for an office of the city attorney, to bring it in-house. And so we are looking at that. I'm hoping to have it out for recruitment certainly by June. So that's kind of where we are. I expect to bring this, if you approve for this to go forward, I expect to bring it to council next week on consent. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Seeing any questions? Is there any objection to putting this on consent next week? Seeing none, I think we'll move on to the next item. Thanks, yeah, you can put that on consent.
Thank you very much.
Great. The next item on consent is approving the HSO Enterprise Solution Statement of Work to create accounts payable file for KeyBank D365 Automated Payables Project. And we have our TIS Director, Mike Marshand, here to present. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. So we're here today to seek your approval to add a contract approval to the April 15th consent agenda. Contract is in the amount of $93,100 with our partner, HSO, and is to implement a consolidated payable solution in D365, allowing our partner, KeyBank, to pay our vendors on our behalf. This work is part of the approved BTIP D365 Phase II project. And that is it.
Other, any other details you want to share, or that's all?
I think that's all, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council on this one? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Just, can you just talk us through a little bit of how they're processed now?
I would have to defer to our Finance Director, I believe, for further information, perhaps. Les Carmen has a few details.
Yeah, the project team has identified that at the highest level, city staff are currently writing the checks and mailing them out. So this automates that process, and lets KeyBank do that on our behalf and send back a file showing what we've paid and lets us reconcile it in the D365 process.
I believe we have Haritha Nara here to answer the question.
Carmen can kind of answer the question, so that's the reason. So we are spending a lot of capacity right now in kind of, you know, creating those checks and mailing them, folding them, putting it in an envelope and mailing them. So this process will give quite a bit of efficiencies within the department or the division, and also it kind of integrates with our system, so which, where they have quite a bit of reporting that they can utilize to make this process much easier and efficient.
Council Vice President?
Just to follow up, can you, I guess, walk us through a little bit of that process? So this is, someone's going to submit that this vendor needs to be paid, payroll's going to do it, and then it's going to be like, like we all do with our own personal finances, where we ask the bank to mail that check. Is that accurate?
So I think the KeyBank consolidated payables process, as it is integrated with the D365 system, we will, they are, if I'm understanding correctly, on the technology side of it, they are going to provide, once we reconcile the payables, this is linked to the KeyBank, and they have the list of these payables and the vendors' list, who are opted either by check, wire, or ACH, and based on that, they're going to pay the vendors. So everything is done by them, including wire, ACH, or credit cards, or checks.
Councilmember Fields?
So I'm not as interested in the process. I trust that, I mean, I get this, and I trust that you've done the work and the due diligence to say, in my mind, this is basically a make-buy sort of, or a make-buy type decision. Bring it in-house or get services. What I'm interested in ongoing, not just on this, but on all of the things when we make those kinds of decisions, is something a little more specific than we're moving from burden to breeze. I think we need to start calculating and projecting and measuring the savings that we think these kinds of investments will make. And I would like for you to come back at some point and say, yes, we saved X many hours of input-type work per month, and we've used those hours that we save for higher-level tasks of some kind, and we've improved our services or something. When we make these decisions, we seem to make them on faith and judgment, but we never really understand exactly what we're, how well we are doing with our taxpayer money. So I guess it's not a hard ask, but I sure would like to see it at some point.
I totally agree, Councilmember Fields. This is one of the initiatives we are trying to automate most of our processes, so that is the idea over it also. But we will get back to you with some statistical data soon, once we have it.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Yep.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. I love getting into automation and things that we don't have to worry too much about, and anytime that we can eliminate human error. I agree with Councilmember Fields, you know, kind of just seeing the data behind it. And just for anybody who's listening, can you walk us through why we need something built for us to implement? Because it sounds like, and I know that it's not, but it sounds like something as easy as a bill pay system that we could get from KeyBank, if we're a consumer at KeyBank, or wherever we're banking at, and just set that up without such a larger price tag. And I also appreciate that it's not a huge price tag when we're talking about the budget that we have, but just so that the listening public has a little bit better understanding of why we need architects to create the structure for us to implement.
I would defer that to Wanda, who is managing this project on a TIS side of it. Wanda, would you be able to respond to that question?
Yeah, so HSO is our D365 vendor, where all of the data is stored for all the payments, anything that involves money for the city. So it's a one-time charge to create the file for KeyBank. Once KeyBank gets the file, they take care of all the payments to the vendors. And the solution itself, once they have the file, it actually pays for itself. The consolidated program we're going to be under with KeyBank, the operational charges will amount to about $12,000 a year, and we'll get almost that back and more on a yearly rebate that they use by paying our vendors with the credit card solution that they have. We have not looked at a bill pay system, but I do know bill pay. I guess we haven't looked at a bill paying them through bill pay, but there's hundreds of vendors, so that would take a lot of resource time internally for somebody to do that.
Councilmember, I could add a little extra details as well. So D365 and platforms like it are extremely flexible, so it's kind of like a blank slate in some ways. So the finance, we've configured it to manage our books in the way that the city needs it to work. The other thing it can do is that you could export the data, but we have to tell it how to export the data, and the data exports will vary depending on the vendor that we work with. So KeyBank has very specific requirements for how they need to receive this information, so we need to go into D365. It doesn't have any of that configured on how it will export it, so we need to go into there, configure the output so that it includes the right fields that KeyBank needs, and structure it in a way that KeyBank can understand, and then just sort of build through that process to basically make that file the way KeyBank requires. It would be the same with virtually any other bill pay vendor, so we need to get the data to them in the way that they can digest, and that's essentially what this work is, is to do that.
Wonderful, thank you, Director Marshand, for that clarification. My follow-up question is 93,100, that is for implementation, and do, is there any foreseeable reason why we would need ongoing costs? I know once it's built, it's done, and then we're over to KeyBank, but at that point, then we're good?
Yes and no. So there's likely going to be some ongoing maintenance required as D365 is upgraded, as it changes. There's a potential, the way that it handles data can change, that would then require tweaks or minor adjustments to this. We do have a service, we do have a support contract with HSO, so this would fall within the scope of that. So any adjustments that would need, we would leverage them to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, just to follow up on kind of the last two questions, if there is some sort of simple view that we could see of that $93,000, and then a couple years out of those projected savings that Wanda had mentioned, at what point we've kind of recovered that initial cost? I think that could be helpful. We don't necessarily need to go deep into how long over time, although eventually we'll want to see that. I think that holistic request would be good, but just getting that initially as we look at this, to say, hey, we are going to spend this, but we'll ultimately know that within a short period of time, we'll recover that. I think that'd be helpful. Any other comments or questions on this? It's been proposed to put this on our consent agenda on the next week's business meeting, April 15th. Is there any objection to putting this on the consent agenda? Seeing none, you can proceed with that, and we'll move on to the next item. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of ordinance amending RMC 5.44.060, return required due dates and payment, changing the frequency of due dates and payment for telephone business, competitive telephone service, and cellular telephone service. And we have our Finance Director, Kelly Cochran, here to introduce this item. Go ahead.
Thank you. With me today, I have Kelly C. She is a program manager within the Finance Department. Under her umbrella falls the risk program, as well as the monitoring of our utility taxes. She is a process improvement expert, lawyer, can't leave things alone if she sees an opportunity to make an improvement, and that's what we have in front of us today. So she saw a problem, has created an avenue for us to get a very workable solution in place for our customers, and I'll let her explain.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here today to share that we are proposing a code change to adjust the payment frequency for utility tax payments from telephone and cellular businesses. So this change aims to improve efficiency and reduce the administrative burden for both businesses and city staff. Currently, these tax payments are filed and processed monthly, and we're proposing to update the payment schedule so that businesses will file and pay quarterly or annually, depending on their monthly gross income. We are proposing that the effective date of this change would be January 1st, 2026, as this allows us adequate time to notify impacted businesses and the community, and also allows businesses sufficient time to update their accounting processes as needed. We do not anticipate any challenges in implementing this change or any pushback from the community. In fact, just a couple weeks ago, we did get a letter from a local telecom business requesting if they could reduce their payment frequency to either quarterly or annually, because currently their monthly tax payments are less than $5 a month, and this is all processed manually by check. We are requesting your approval for this code change to go on the consent agenda next week on April 15th.
Essentially, what this change does is it eliminates a lot of administrative work, both on our customer end and on our end, when we are working to process payments of very nominal amounts. So it allows a more infrequent payment period. It also will have no impact on our cash flow.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on this? Councilmember Fields?
I had a question, but then Director Cochran answered it in her last four words, there's no impact on cash flow. So, thank you.
Thank you. I had a similar question, I was like, check. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, team. I really appreciate you bringing this forward. I just wanted to ask two small questions. First, is the number we see in our packet 125, that's the total number of businesses that are impacted, total?
Yeah, like, give or take. That was using the most recent data I had from January 2025. It is about between 125 to 130-ish. It just depends how they file. People file late sometimes, too, and...
Okay. And so my second question, and you did share a couple of anecdotes about how folks have been actually eager for this kind of change, but could you tell us other work that's been completed in order to get feedback from some of these businesses that will be impacted?
I think so. Before this proposal, I also reached out to other cities to see what they're doing, too, because I just don't think all, I know other cities are also looking for ways to, you know, reduce this type of administrative burden, and one of our resources, MRSC, like, gave me a list of what other cities are doing, and quite a few of them are doing it based off of gross income, because it's, right, since it doesn't affect the total cash received, it's really like, do we get, you know, a couple thousand a month? Like, do we get $3,000 a month, or do we want to get 36K at the year? So it's the same, it's just all the time spent of dealing with these manual payments. So that's kind of how I did it, just looking at what other cities are doing.
Thank you. I do understand your response, and I do understand that at the end of the day, it is the same amount of cash. We've recently made a few changes that caught people off guard, and this is a much smaller number of customers, but I would be more comfortable knowing that we gave folks an opportunity to weigh in on the proposal that's in front of us, and to gather a bit more information, to just make sure that it's something that is, we think it's, what I'm synthesizing is, we think it's going to be really good for everyone, including our customers. But I'm also not hearing that we have definitely asked them for their feedback on that.
There will be nothing that prevents someone from filing monthly if they choose to. So there, if folks choose to not take advantage of the opportunity that we've had, that we've made by allowing a quarterly or annual reporting, they can continue to report as they are, if that works best for them. I anticipate that most businesses will choose not to. I do think, though, that it is a great question in terms of what else is on the table, what else can we do? And I think that this might be an opportunity, as we're communicating this change, to maybe, you know, open the channel of communication and see if there are other things that they, you know, would like to express that we could address.
Thank you. It sounds like we have a bit of time on this, since we're not looking for implementation until the beginning of next year. So the ordinance, I did hear what you said, Director Cochran, and I'm also reading the ordinance that says that the payments shall be made quarterly. So I think it'd be helpful to have a little bit of feedback from folks who would be impacted personally, and I'd be curious how the rest of the council feels. Thanks.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you, Councilmember Fields, because I feel like you just teed up my question beautifully, and that was what's the communication that we're having with the businesses. Redmond, we're experiencing so much change, and especially our businesses being kind of, here's the change and kind of deal with it. And I see an opportunity where we can continue making, like, reaching out and saying, hey, this is what we're considering, what's your feedback on it, or this is coming, and you also have the option to continue on in monthly. Now we're just broadening your options that you have, whereas with an ordinance and saying that they shall be made quarterly, then the one thing that's constant is change, but nobody likes to be changed. So I just want to make sure that we've got communication going out to our business community, saying, hey, this is a heads up, and we're in partnership.
I think one of the things that we can work on, a communication strategy. I would like to get a sense of perhaps other things that are going on citywide that we could sort of encumber or encompass into the conversation in order to have it be a really value-added exercise of seeking feedback. So we will, let me noodle on sort of different ways to move that forward. We also may want to look at the ordinance. Thank you for reminding me of the language in there. And perhaps it's looking at that language differently, so that it does not say "shall", but says "could", or, you know, there's no penalty if paid, you know, or monthly, whatever my words are that I'm trying to find. So we will look at things from that perspective and come back.
And thank you for bringing it forward, because I love looking for a path to efficiency, how can we handle this less, how can we make it easier for both sides and create a win-win? So I believe that it was a wonderful solution that you found, and just looking at the communication on it. Yeah.
Thank you. I'll just weigh in here. I think the issue that's been raised could just be addressed by adding an extra sentence, like, either, you know, businesses of any type may opt to pay monthly, or something like that. To be able to add that into the ordinance, that the "shall" is, that's kind of the, what would be the ceiling of where you need to do, but that you could also do monthly if you wanted to, that we could just add that extra sentence. But from my perspective, I mean, I do appreciate going out and getting some input from businesses, but what I've heard when I've talked with businesses about other things that we've done, is that they would like less paperwork from the city, fewer steps and things to remember. So this seems like this is just a net benefit, to say, you only have to do it once a year or quarterly instead of monthly, in terms of cutting checks. So I'd be inclined to still move this forward sooner, just so that way we can streamline things sooner on both sides, maybe with that additional language in there to address the concerns. But it sounds like maybe you can come back to us with that proposed language?
Sure. Yes, we will put this on the May FAC with that changed language, bring back to you then our communication plan, in terms of when we will be messaging to customers and any other insight we have at that point.
Was this originally proposed to go to consent for April 15th?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I will ask the council, before we jump into pushing all the way to the May FAC, whether, would council want to see the communications plan come back and wait another month? Or would we be okay seeing the comms plan come and that piece of language sent to us before it goes onto the business meeting agenda? I see Councilmember Fields has his hands up.
Yeah, I'm good with this going on consent agenda as soon as it was scheduled. I appreciate the questions. I do think that we, you know, we learned our lesson, I think, on the credit card charge thing that happened on utilities not that long ago. So it is good to be due diligence, but as a former business owner, actually still a current business owner, the less scheduling of paperwork that I have to do with the government, the better. So I agree with Council President Kritzer. I think that, sure, we can do a communication plan, but I don't think we need to hold this up for that.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
I would agree with keeping it on consent for the 15th, and just getting that language in advance, and then seeing the communication plan at the next FAC meeting.
Councilmembers who already spoke up on this, does that work as a plan, or do you have any concerns about that? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
My only concern is not having, and this is an assumption, but I understood it, that we didn't have a whole lot of feedback. We've heard from a couple of business owners, but we haven't had a lot of feedback back from the business owners about what they think about this. So if we are just passing it, we've got a communications plan, but we really still haven't asked, like, hey, what do you think about this? And we've heard from them, they want to be partnered in, we've heard that they want to have a say. My concern is that we're saying, this is going to be, and yeah, we'll come up with a plan, but we're going to go ahead and push it out anyway.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's an important distinction. I had heard communications plan, I think you were asking for feedback gathering. Councilmember Stewart, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I, again, overall, very much support not only this solution, but the culture that created a solution, you know, looking for solutions. But in this particular case, I think we missed a step, where we didn't ask the folks who would be impacted about, for some of their feedback. And this council has had just so many recent examples where we've then heard about, heard that feedback after the fact. So I'm not comfortable on voting on this until we've gotten a little bit of feedback from the folks who would be most impacted by this decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I do appreciate the councilmember's point about either missing a step or being more in touch. But I do, I would caution us, all of us on council, that there is a balance here, and we, hopefully, will be making innovative changes as our new finance system actually manifests more opportunities for efficiencies. And there is, sometimes, there is a point where you can talk too much, or ask too much. And I'm not saying this is one of those times, but I think we have to be mindful of the amount of work it takes to go out and poll the business community or poll the residents every single time. Some things are straightforward. I do not, in that statement, want to lose sight of what Councilmember Stewart said. We have had some experiences where we thought we got the input, we thought we had an understanding, and turns out we didn't. So, but this is one, I'm fine either way, but my preference is to move it forward.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I appreciate the wanting to gather business feedback on this. The way I understand it, it's 130-ish businesses, telecom businesses, just telecom businesses. The way I understand it, it's 130-ish businesses, telecom businesses, just telecom businesses, that will still have, after this change, the ability to pay monthly, the expanded ability to pay quarterly, or the expanded ability to pay annually. So we're not actually taking anything away, we're actually adding better options. So that's why I am still comfortable moving forward on the 15th.
Thank you.
Well, it seems like we have some different opinions here. I do want to also, I guess, be mindful if we are going to direct staff to spend a significant amount of time to do outreach, whether there's some, maybe there's something in between where there could be a notice sent to businesses to let them know. And before we vote, maybe we delay the vote by a few weeks in case anyone wants to send us feedback?
It is certainly on our intent to send multiple notices, which is why we are asking for, you know, a commitment to the change so we can start that noticing. I will tell you, we are not going to get feedback that will be valuable. I just am thinking through the different options or ways that we can seek out input from this sort of smaller group of customers. And I think about the level of engagement that we typically get on these types of items. And I am just not sure that we can provide a level of feedback that is going to give council a kind of comfort that you're looking for. I think the piece that I, I think that we can, there's certainly, you know, the monitoring of the implementation of the change and how many customers are changing their payment cycles and, you know, if we found that to be, you know, beneficial, if people are taking advantage of it, we know it was a positive change. If it is so positive that we see, you know, hardly any hanging out in the monthly payment range, then maybe we talk about, you know, choosing to eliminate that payment option just to get rid of that remaining administrative burden. I feel like that is probably the best solution that we have for right now. This is not an item on our work plan for this year. It is something that I just strongly believe is a benefit to our customers and to our staff and is something that I would love the opportunity to get going. If this is sort of a larger item, I would say that we will probably put it on pause until we have the capacity to address it.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Cochran, thank you so much. I very much appreciate that. I think if the conversation, the answer to the question had been, we called 10 businesses and two picked up the phone, this is what they had to say, that's the level of engagement that sounds like what you would have felt was like maybe more reasonable for something like this. And if that had fit, that might have alleviated my concern for the moment. I super appreciate you. There's not a lot that's really comfortable about this job, so I am okay living in this space if the majority of the council would like to move on. And if I am not ready to do so by next week, I am happy to vote no on a matter of process just to continue to remind us, and sometimes unfortunately we have to take those tough votes. I don't want to stand in the way of a good solution, but I am also really supportive of a culture that while seeking solutions, does it with those impacted by those solutions. So I'd like to, in the future, have a yes and. And if we don't have that by next Tuesday, I'm happy to play the role that it is my job to play sometimes.
I'll just jump in for a sec as a solution potentially is, perhaps we don't put it on this upcoming business meeting, but the following. And if you could just send us a message, if you could have, could reach out to a couple, a sample size of, just to be able to say, here's the proposed item that's going to be going on to the council's business meeting agenda, you know, let us know if you have any concerns about this. And we also add the line in the text that just makes it clear that this is just adding options, it's not restricting the ability on monthly. That way, we could get that feedback in advance of voting to make council members more comfortable. Councilmember Nova Camina?
Thank you. And want to reiterate just about everything that Councilmember Stewart said. Having the culture to bring something forward to, hey, I noticed this, is huge, because in a lot of, in a lot of cultures, that does not exist. So I hugely advocate for that. I think that's wonderful. I like the solution. My concern is at a more macro level, and that is, what is the perception currently of the city? What is the relationship status? And in relationships, I believe that each party is 100% responsible for the current status of the relationship. So if we know that there's an issue with it, then somebody has got to take the lead. In this case, I believe that it's our case, it's our responsibility to take the lead in it and say, but did we do our due diligence? Regardless of if we're going to get the feedback that we're looking for or not, or level of participation, I'm less concerned about that. I mean, yes, that is an issue. However, did we do what there was for us to do in this situation where we know the larger temperature of the, of the relationship? And that's where I'd like for us to say, yeah, we did what we, what there was for us to do. And especially since there are decisions that are made that are outside of council's control, but is perceived as, no, we're all in there. So when we do have an opportunity to say, hey, did we do what we needed to do, then I can sleep at night saying, yeah, we checked that box.
Great. Thank you so much. I am hearing a majority of council members that do want to send this for a vote. So let's schedule it for May 6th unless there's objection there to go on consent, and hopefully we'll get some more information back before then. If council members disagree at that, or feel at that point that we, you haven't received it, you can pull it off of consent. Does that work for everyone? Okay, great. Not seeing any objections. So we'll go forward with that, and hopefully we'll hear back from you on any additional feedback we get. All right. Well, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of a consultant services agreement with Stepherson Associates Communications in the amount of $74,600 for teen services engagement. And we have our deputy parks director, Zach Hoover, here to present.
Good evening, council. I am Zach Hoover, Parks Deputy Director, and I am seeking approval to award a consultant services agreement to Stepherson and Associates in the amount of $74,600 for teen services engagement. We are planning for the future of our younger residents and want to understand how to best serve our current and future teens. We know that the needs and preferences of Redmond teens evolve over time, and so we're starting this conversation to learn how our current resources and services meet the needs of new generations and to identify any gaps. We want to provide an opportunity to shape the future of how the city engages and supports teens. And so SNA will be continuing to assist us in engaging the community with specific outreach around what teens need, how the city can best serve their interests, and where services are needed most. Phase one could be summed up as project management, content, and plan development. This contract approval is phase two for implementation, engagement, and reporting. So they will be assisting with weekly coordination for the project core team, materials development community, and stakeholder engagement. We, staff along with SNA, will be going out into the community in the spring and summer and really going out to both internal and external events, listening to community, hearing their concerns and questions for us and the ability to answer those. So we'll be, we'll be going out to Beat the Bunny, Anderson Park Planning Event, Cinco, Sound Transit, United Festivals, Redmond High School Choir, VegFest, and Youth for Us. Overall, we have eight tabling sessions, four briefings, and a community event planned for latter half of May. In addition to the tabling and events, we've reached out to a multitude of service providers, community-based organizations in the school district, and offered to have project staff come and discuss with their own communities. Final reporting and closeout will include engagement summaries from all outreach, questionnaire results, PowerPoint slides, and key findings. This item was approved in the 25-26 budget, and staff will be coming back and providing updates to council specifically on the engagement process in May, June, July, and then a study session in August. Early results on the questionnaire, it launched on March 28th. It is live until April 21st, and I just checked in with our communications staff, and we have 202 responses to that questionnaire, which is great. Still need, still need more, so any way that we can get that out to the community would be greatly appreciated. And then the project team has also responded to about 30 Q alerts on the same topic, and we responded to all community members. Requesting to put this item on consent calendar for next week, April 15th at the regular business meeting, and happy to open up for any questions.
Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thank you. Just in reviewing the attached documentation, I'm seeing it's got a lot of virtual meetings, and I'm not sure that that's the best space for capturing our teens. Can you just elaborate on why those virtual meetings, how many in person, if there's an ability to transition to in-person? It feels like virtual may not be the best mode for some of that work.
Yeah, so let me clarify that. So the virtual meetings are just our weekly coordinating calls with the consultant and the project staff. We are going out in those tabling meetings and service, project team going out to the service and community-based organizations. So there is extensive in-person touch here.
And then, sorry, just to follow up on that. I appreciate the, being out in the community events, but the scoping on, I see like RYPAC is on here, but what about the teens who are currently feeling displaced and where are those meetings falling in?
Yeah, so part of the reason why we have gone to RYPAC is we, as older adults, are trying to find out the best resources to have teens get the information that they need. And sometimes we know that they're not on email and they may not even go online. And so we're really asking our RYPAC members and other dropping kids that are currently using services, how, how we can get the word out within their own, within their own demographic. And so, yes, we're trying to attempt to go out into different variety of community events to try and hit the majority of people who are attending those. Project staff will also be going out and going to live music and open mic nights to try and get feedback for that questionnaire and services overall.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes, so bear with me for a second on this question. I was really struck by the contrast between what we heard in a study session or from the mayor and the parks director and the outreach that they had done on the teen center as I compared that to the public testimony that we got last week. I can't even imagine that those two conclusions were in the same universe, much less the same planet. What we had heard was that, you know, that there was a good understanding, and we talked with quite a few people, and the representation was there in the briefing from the mayor and the parks director, but that clearly was amiss. It was not, could not have been accurate. And the reason I'm saying that is to Councilmember Forsythe's point, how do we ensure that we are reaching the entire range of teens? Teens are, yes, that is a demographic, but they're not all made the same way. Some have very different challenges than others. We all have been through high school, we know what that's like. You have your athletes, you have your drama people, you have the people who hang out and smoke cigarettes across the street. There's all kinds of different people. And I think what really struck me from the public testimony is how badly we missed that very vulnerable group of teens. So I guess I have two points here. One, whatever this contract is, if it just becomes something easy and smooth and we solicit the kind of response that we want, I'm going to be very disappointed. The second thing is, Councilmember Forsythe often says, is there any chance that we can have a council member at the table? And here's one where I really believe that a council member who has an open mind to the entire community should be at the table. So is that possible?
Thank you, councilmembers. So yes, the, the community meeting that staff are planning with SNA right now, we will be reaching out to council and hope that you all are able to come for that community meeting.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to note, since we just got a notice of the date of that, is that it's actually got scheduled for the day before we currently have our council conversations scheduled. And I think that we might want to be able to look at aligning on the dates a little better there, since then it makes it seem like we're going to have a council conversation, then we're going to have this other conversation, and they're back to back. And I'd also worry whether councilmembers could attend two nights in a row. So hopefully, council leadership can work with you just specifically on that, to be able to make the timing work so councilmembers can attend this specific meeting, as well as hopefully we'll have our council conversations, that if people want to come more informally talk to us about it, that would be great. But just reflecting, hearing from the council of wanting to really be involved in these conversations, I'll go to Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the council president for addressing that question when it came across my inbox. I also noticed the same thing. Deputy Director Hoover, I just wanted to clarify that, in fact, this is the budgeted service enhancement that the council took on before knowing that we would have a change in our facilities that serve young people in our community. And so I just want to make sure I had that right. I share also the interest in making sure that through this project, we are hearing youth voice, youth voice, youth voice. And I didn't quite catch all of the festivals and whatnot that you mentioned, and I wanted to make sure we were going to have geography of neighborhoods included in the outreach to make sure that we are hearing from young people who live in our more traditional neighborhoods, our urban centers, and all around. In that list that you offered, are you seeing geographic diversity in the outreach efforts?
Yeah, so first, your first question was regarding budget, and so yes, that is true, that this is the one-time service enhancement that was decided upon many months ago. Second, geography of neighborhoods, are you, is the question in regards to the events that we're going to be attending? Are they in different parts of town? Yes, so they'll be on municipal campus, downtown park, FM, and the community meeting is currently scheduled at RSCE.
Did I hear that all of those events are downtown, then?
Yes, currently, yes.
Okay. So that would be in making sure, whatever, however we are tracking data to make sure we're hearing from a geographic diversity of young people, that would be something that is important to me. And then, thank you, my very last question, I apologize to the chair. The total cost of this contract is actually only about half of what we authorized. Do you anticipate needing to come back with a different version or an addendum at any time, or do we think that we just overbudgeted?
So this is the second phase, so this is actually still under budget for the amount that we budgeted for in the 25-26 budget, and I don't anticipate that we'll go over that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll weigh in here as well. I appreciate the comments from my colleagues, and I would just echo, I think in particular what I've heard thus far and some feedback from some of the different teens that have weighed in, is, is that some are involved with RYPAC, some aren't. And I think finding different ways to make sure that we can create a real open sense, regardless of how, whether they're formally or informally involved, if they just love the teen center, love dropping in, that we can, we can make sure we kind of create space to gather those voices is really important. The other thing is, you know, I think the way the outreach has been done, it's really, it's been focused on what are the services and the kind of needs of teens. And I know that, that, we've heard that from Director Hamilton, is that it seems like there's this, a perspective of seeing that, and then the actual building as two separate things. But I do think that in terms of what the council's decision will be going forward, that gathering feedback on opinions around that actual built environment or space and think, as we can capture that as part of this, not just the services that get delivered, but from what I've heard from the feedback thus far, the actual kind of space considerations are also important, and I think will be something that we'll want to know as we make decisions as a council going forward on facilities. So I just wanted to check in if that is in the scope of what it is that we'll be getting feedback on.
Yes, thank you, councilmember. So yes, we are trying to delay it between the facility discussion that Director Hamilton will leave. She is coming to the April 22nd study session for that topic, and then the engagement and services. And so that's why I, I will be coming back May, June, July, and August to talk about some of the engagement, the outreach, some of the responses that we've received, so council can make that decision in tandem with the other discussion that Director Hamilton will be leading.
Great. Well, I understand that, and I guess I would just say, I would think that if we're going to be doing all this outreach anyway, it would be a missed opportunity to not gather at least some questions and answers about people's thoughts specifically on facilities in addition to the services. Because I see that's, that's kind of been the focus of the outreach, and that's what this is about, but that would be my comment on this particular contract, is if there's a way to take advantage of this outreach we're going to do anyway to gather that, I imagine that when it gets to the point of council having to make a decision, I'm going to want that information, so it'd be a shame to miss the opportunity to just gather at same time. Any other comments or questions on this? So I believe the, the goal would be to put So I believe the goal would be to put this on consent for next week's council agenda. Are there any concerns with putting this contract onto consent? Council Vice President Forsyth?
I would just second what you had just said about getting information about facilities as well. So I would, I would definitely want to see that added to the scope. And if you can promise that that will happen, then I'm good with voting on this on the 15th.
I guess I'll just mention that I haven't looked at the entire dataset and all the responses. There's, like I said, there's over 200, but I know that we are getting the feedback about the building, along with this questionnaire that we're asking about teen services. So I feel confident that we'll be able to share that with council through our touchpoints.
Thank you. I think, I think maybe what would address this would be, if there could be a line added into the scope, would be, you know, specifically like gather feedback on perspectives on teen facilities into the scope. So that way, they, just to be clear with the contractors, that we are going to ask them to ask that question, because we'll probably get the answer regardless, but it's nice to ask the question. Any other concerns? All right. So if we see that change, it sounds like we're good to move this to consent next week on our business meeting. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
We'll look forward to that study session coming up later this month, April 22nd, for the listening public. And that brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is the fiscal policy and long-range financial strategy updates. Presenting this is our finance director, Kelly Cochrane. Go ahead.
Good afternoon again. I have this item and a couple of other updates I'm going to stick in there along the way, if you don't mind. First is related to item number two on the agenda today, which was the contract with HSO to work on the AP automation. I want to let council know that that is a part of our story that we're excited to tell as part of not only our purchasing process improvement, but our continued D365 implementation story. So we will be gathering the performance measures that we will be monitoring to be able to really share the success of that implementation. I do expect that that automation to be very impactful in our department. I believe it will shift us away from a focus on quantity to a focus on quality. And I think it will, in the long run, give us some capacity that we can reallocate to other parts of the process. So I just wanted to speak to that. We are in the information gathering stage, understanding exactly what this impact will be to the, to the work group and their processes, but very hopeful of some big improvements. The next is the long-range financial strategy and fiscal policy update. Since the beginning of the year, we've been meeting with communications as well as long-range planning to start to work to update not only the format that we communicate these materials and to bring them up to recent days, but also working to understand the vision that we have laid out in Vision 2050. And what I would like to propose is that we start working on the long-range financial strategy in May and work on that through probably August. The contents of the long-range financial strategy start with sort of this background information and then move to a strategy. The strategic part of this plan speaks significantly to our fiscal policies. There is a direct alignment between what is laid out in the long-range financial strategy and what is communicated or shored up in our fiscal policies. So I'd like to get through sort of the initial review of the strategic components of the long-range financial strategy before we start working collectively on the fiscal policy piece. On the fiscal policy piece, although council at that point will be focused on long-range financial strategy, we do have finance staff that will be working to identify any gaps from programmatically or from best practice in either in policies that we may be missing. We will also be looking at other options for how we organize and communicate our fiscal policies. So when we get to the fiscal policy conversation, we will have a bulk of them that have already been reviewed slash informed by the work that you've done on the long-range financial strategy. We'll have some options for you on how we can strengthen the remaining policies that we need to review. I would like to go then through the fiscal policies through FAC in October and then bring both items to you for a full review at a study session on October 28th. So I think that that gives us enough time to review and get feedback, and then sit down and make sure that all of the items of importance or priority to council are recognized in the end result. Questions?
Comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much to your team and you, Director Cochrane, for putting this plan together. If you could send us those dates one more time for the fall, that would be really helpful. But from my perspective, I look forward to digging into this work that we agreed to do this year and assigned ourselves through the last budget process. Thanks.
I am very much looking forward to updating the long-range financial strategy to reflect the council that we have today and really sort of transition away from concepts that we've outgrown or gotten used to, price of government, BP, and really start infusing some new commitments to the community strategic plan, the environment, to our DEI objectives. I think I am, I can't wait. So excited about that.
Great, thank you. One clarification, the attachment to this, the red line, long-range financial strategy, that's the red lines that were proposed that we did pass at the end of last year?
That's where we currently sit.
Great.
We are planning to use the council SharePoint site to provide not only access to our working documents to council, but also resources that you may find useful in terms of background or informational. So I will be sending you an email with a breakdown of all of these dates, the flow of work, as well as the information that we'll be providing.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Seems like we have a good plan going forward. Seeing none, then we'll, oh, you got one more?
I'm going to beep really fast. I will be joining council meeting next week to provide a staff report on our fourth quarter financial report. I will also be touching base with you on our first quarter. We don't have a lot of performance yet. We are just now working through month and close of March, so we really just have materials through February. But I want to touch base on what, you know, our awareness of, you know, what is happening with the economic climate. I want to touch base with you on our new revenues for the biennium and where we are in that process. And just sort of give you a preview, and then I will be back for a staff report in May for the first quarter report. And I wanted to also let council know that we have added a study session in November to do a review of our performance measures as well as a status update on our service enhancement packages for this biennium.
Thank you. And actually, since you brought it up, the performance measures, sorry, you said, when were you planning to bring that back?
That, so we are doing, we're going to do a performance measure review and service enhancement review in the November timeframe.
Great. Well, I think on our council's priorities that we had put was wanting to review some of those performance measures, so it might make sense to bring those for some earlier feedback or review a little bit earlier in the year, so we don't get too cramped, just as a suggestion on that, just for us to look at those early and be able to give you any initial feedback you could then bring to us during that session.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation to Director Cochrane and also the fact that the council has been patient as we have implemented the technology. I know from my own experience that technology comes first, but the real innovation and the creativity of staff comes after those tools are in place. And I see that happening, and I applaud that work. So thank you, Director Cochrane, and thank you, council, for being patient on that.
Thank you, councilmember Fields. Great. Any other updates? All right. Well, thank you so much, Director Cochrane. And with that, we'll close out this item. That brings us to the last item on our agenda, that's, or that's the last item on our agenda. And if there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned.
And you're clear.